So popcorn, that's a really, uh. I mean, I don't, I don't like when it gets stuck in my teeth. That's all I'm gonna say. But, uh, anyone, anyone else wanna join? Movie? Okay, uh, what's the?
Yeah, you gotta have movie popcorn with all that yummy butter and.
What's the difference?
You stuff. It makes it so delicious.
What's the difference between?
Yeah, what's the difference? Yeah. Oh, blueberries. That is awesome.
You guys have not, cannot tell the difference between microwave popcorn and movie theater popcorn. Come on. We all need to go to the movies then.
Dried mango. Wow, we're going healthy. Oh, someone said chocolate.
Blueberries. Strawberries are a good one, too.
Snickers is my favorite chocolate. If y'all wanna, you know, give me some one day.
Well, welcome, guys. We're gonna give it about two minutes for everybody to get in, and then we will get started.
Wow, we have someone, he eats, uh, or they eat Pepsi. I don't know. We're eating Pepsi now. It's a new thing. Get the new Pepsi snack.
They're coming up with all kinds of crazy sodas, coffee sodas and.
The Three Musketeers. It's not better than Snickers, though.
Just adding more caffeine to the, to the Coke products is all that is. Anybody remember Jolt?
Yes.
I, I, I don't remember that one. When did that come out? Is that the new?
No, it's been a while. It was pure caffeine.
Yeah, it was kind of free, the energy shots, right?
Yes. It, it, yeah, it was more potent than the little five hour energy shots.
Great for long road trips when you're driving at night.
Again, when, when did this come out? I was not aware of this.
Cursor to all of these other energy drinks. It was like the first one. That they don't even make anymore. That's how bad they are.
Yeah.
I guess I wasn't alive then. I don't know. I wasn't hip. I wasn't hip back then.
Nineteen eighty-five.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Oh, wow.
That was the studying for finals in high school years.
For some of you, yeah.
Yeah, no, I'm a, I'm a O two baby, so, uh, I don't think this, uh, this resonates with me.
No, but it might. Your parents.
Uh, it might be. I'm, I'm gonna ask my mom today. You remember Jolt back then?
Well, let's go ahead and get this started. Eugenia, you wanna share your screen?
Yeah, stop sharing.
Good afternoon, everybody. Uh, welcome to the Reverse Town Hall, February twenty-third, twenty twenty-two. Who can believe it's already the end of February? Let's go ahead and get this started. Um, welcome students, welcome staff. Um, we are very excited to have you all here. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Um, it is one oh seven PM. Our secretary is running late, so I'm gonna go ahead and do roll, roll call real fast. Christie, President, present. Emerson, Vice President.
Present.
Julie, Secretary, running late. Eugenia, Treasurer.
Present.
Leonard, Parliamentarian. Unfortunately, he had a conflict with United Student Council. Mel? Kiosa, Historian.
Present.
Great. Okay, so now I'm gonna turn the floor over to Eugenia for our new tradition of our positivity moment.
Hi, everyone. Good afternoon. Uh, for this positivity moment, I wanted to, as a mom and as a student, and as someone as all of us in this world with a busy, busy life, I wanted to share and this positive positivity moment. It says, "Taking care of yourself makes you stronger for everyone in your life, including you." And that's by Kelly Rudolph. And, um, I love this picture. I saw it. Hug yourself, hug your heart, love yourself, really, right? In this, um, crazy world that we're living in nowadays, and so it's very important to take care of yourself. Kind of be a little selfish, you know, take some time and, and, um, put yourself first sometimes. Thank you.
Next slide. So I'm gonna do a quick introduction to the new board. Um, we've had some changes since our last Reverse Town Hall. I myself have stepped up as president. Unfortunately, we've had a couple people had to leave for personal reasons. As well as we've moved Eugenia into my spot as Treasurer. So, uh, Kiosa, would you like to introduce yourself? She is our new historian.
Hello, guys. How you guys doing? I'm Kiosa. I'm the new historian. I'm also in my second semester of school. I'm getting, uh, looking forward to getting to know you guys. I am from Louisiana, and I've been in, uh, with HCC since the summer of twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, Kiosa. Um, go ahead and introduce the, just a quick recap of the rest of the board, since Julie's not here yet. Emerson? Vice President?
I'm sorry.
Would you like to introduce yourself real fast?
Hello, my name's Emerson. I'm the Vice President of, um, SGA. I'm currently, uh, well, new exciting news. Oh, Julie's here.
Yay.
So do you wanna do Julie first and then me?
Go ahead and finish, and then we'll get. Okay.
So, uh, something new and exciting that just happened. I recently, uh, recently just switched majors. So now I'm, now I'm in Computer Science, so it's, uh, really awesome and, um, I don't know, it's gonna be crazy and I'm gonna love it, so. But yeah, my name's Emerson. I'll pass it on to Julie. Uh, if you can introduce yourself, please, if you're ready.
Yes, hello. Uh, my name is Julie. Uh, my major is computer engineering. Uh, this is my last semester at HCC. I'm graduated with May. Uh, I'm transferring to U of H to get my bachelor's in computer engineering. Yes, that will be all. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Um, we have Eugenia. While she's been with us for a while, she's in her new position. Eugenia, would you like to say hi?
Hi, everyone. Yes, um, I am Treasurer this semester, and it's been a little bit more in my field. I am, I already have an associate's in accounting, but I decided to go for the bachelor's, and this will be my last semester here at HCC, transferring to U of H also.
Um, Mel, would you like to introduce yourself?
Hello, everyone. My name is Mel. I am the humanitarian for SGA, so, um, volunteering opportunities. I'm the guy to contact. I am currently majoring in nursing, and I'm also graduating this semester. Nice to see you all.
Eugenia, next slide. So now I'd like to introduce the panel. Um, I know that there's a couple of us not with us yet. So we have, Dr. Hodges is running a few minutes late, so we'll get to his introduction in just a few minutes when he gets on. Dr. Adiel, Dean of Student Success, would you like to introduce yourself, please?
Yes, good afternoon, um, everyone. Thank you for joining us today. We are very excited about this Reverse Town Hall. Thank you, Student Government, for hosting this. Um, we always enjoy this, uh, the town, Reverse Town Hall and this discussion and dialogue with the students. Um, my name is Rima Adiel. I'm a dean of the students and, um, we support most, most of the student services that is start, um, at the entry and goes all the way to graduation. So, um, in our area, in the student services, we have a recruitment office, enrollment services, advising services, counseling services, career services, testing, student life, record sport, the student basic needs, um, and anything else that you all need support with, we are here to assist you. Our team, um, of superstars at Northwest College, uh, they're always there to help you. It's just that we ask, as soon as you need us, let us know, so we, we can guide you for your next steps. So that's who I am. Rima Adiel, Dean of Students. I'm housed at, uh, Alee Phase Campus.
Thank you. Sorry about that. My mouse got lost on the page. Um, did Dr. Anne Zavino join us yet?
I do not believe she made it yet.
Well, hopefully he'll have an opportunity to, to join us. He is the College of Operations Officer. Next. Should be Dr., Dr. Riley, um, Dean of Visual and Performing Arts. Dr. Riley, would you like to, um, introduce yourself?
Hi, everyone. Uh, my name is Colleen Riley. I'm super excited to be here today, and thank you, SGA, for, um, having me. I'm the Dean of the Center of Excellence for Media, Visual and Performing Arts. Um, so the programs under my area are art, dance, drama, music, audio recording technology, filmmaking, and music business. Um, so we have our Center of Excellence here at Northwest College, so you can find us at Katie and Alee and Spring Branch. Um, we also offer our courses system-wide, particularly with our fine arts. Um, so it's, uh, really exciting to be, um, in, in leadership with our arts faculty. Very proud of the work that they do. Very excited about our return this semester to student exhibitions and performances, um, and just happy to be here today. So, hi, everybody.
Thank you, Dr. Riley. We're so excited that you could be with us, too. Um, it, did Dean Viselli get a chance to join us?
Uh, not yet.
Not yet. Okay, so Dean Viselli will, is the Dean of Engineering, so hopefully, um, they'll be able to join us shortly and, because we have a few questions, and if not, uh, maybe Dr. Adiel and Dr. Riley, you can kind of fill in some gaps?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Brown has a question.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Um, so I actually just got done. Um, I'm have, uh, texting Dr. Anne Zavino. She's having some issues connecting. Um, actually, we have, um, Director of Auxiliary Services, Jeff Dunbar, on the call. Um, Jeff, would you be willing to, um, answer our questions for Dr. Anne Zavino?
I will try.
Okay, perfect. So I'll go ahead and make you a co-host, um, and add you to our panel. And, um, actually, this would be a great time if you wanna introduce yourself. I'm sure that I missed part of your title, and I don't wanna miss anything.
Thank you, Dominic. Can you introduce yourself, sir? I missed.
Um, my name is Jeff Dunbar. I'm the Director of Auxiliary Services, uh, and, uh, building operations for the campus. I've been here for about six months. And, uh, that's why I'm hoping that I can answer the questions okay for Dr. Anne Zavino today.
Thank you so much for joining us. We're excited to have you as well.
Don't worry.
So let's go ahead and jump to our next slide, Eugenia. So now we have a few questions that we've been collecting for, um, from students and, um, through different means. Our first question is for Dr. Adiel. Many of our current board are graduating this spring, and along with many other students, they have questions regarding the process, Dr. Adiel. At what point in the semester do graduating students start to apply, and what are the steps they need to take for graduation now?
It's a very good question, and I think it is very timely since we are in a spring semester. Um, so in general, you apply as soon as you are in your very last semester, or you register for your classes. But there are, uh, some other things that are very important, um, that goes hand in hand. If you ask me, when is a good time to go get the graduation audit? If you are pursuing associate degree, anytime after forty-five credits, please check in with your assigned academic advisor to make sure that you are on path to graduate on time and, and you are taking the right classes. That gives you some cushions. If you have a class here and there, then you can at least fit in your schedule. Another thing that I wanna point out is sometime there's a confusion. Um, so we have two graduation ceremonies, one in the spring and one in fall. Um, students who are planning to, who are, is the students who are completing their coursework, planning to finish everything by summer, they can still walk for the spring graduation. Even though you may have a course or two that could be outstanding, you can, you, if you choose, you can walk either with the spring graduates, or you can wait until fall for that graduation ceremony. This is not to say that you will be awarded a degree without, you know, completing your, all your courses. You will be awarded your credential once your courses are complete, but you know, graduation ceremonies are more, um, it's ceremonial. You just, you know, if you need to invite your family, a lot of time our international students are here, and if their family is here for the spring graduation, you do have that flexibility to walk in the spring and graduate and complete your coursework over the summer. So, um, your academic, assigned academic advisors can help you and set you up in the system, um, to graduate. I hope I answered your question.
Thank you, Dr. Adiel. That was very informative. Now we're moving on to the next question, which is gonna be for Dr. Riley. Um, so now that Dr. Adiel has, um, informed us about steps for graduation, my question is kind of centered, um, about the services offered after graduation, especially in, in your department, um, in, for visual arts and performing arts. So what career services or internships, um, are available to students, especially after, um, graduation? And how can, how can they navigate these resources?
Sure. Well, um, two major areas for students to explore. First is to make sure that you're connected with our HCC Career Services. They do an excellent job of promoting career fairs. Um, they, uh, have a process where you can, um, upload your resume and keep it updated with your credentials that you earn at HCC. Um, and they're very active with you when you are students and as alumni in identifying employee, uh, employment opportunities and notifying employers of your qualification. So, um, they can help coordinate internships after graduation. And the other thing that I wanna highlight is that our faculty are, um, all working artists. And so often they create opportunities for students after graduation. Uh, we have four academic programs in the Center of Excellence for Media, Visual and Performing Arts. And so the goal for those programs is really academic transfer to four-year bachelor's programs. So, um, internships won't necessarily support that transfer, but because we are representing fine arts disciplines, what's really helpful is making sure that you have experiences, and these are often paid experiences, um, with arts organizations in Houston. Houston is very active in arts organizations, dance, theater, uh, music, um, film. Uh, and there are a lot of opportunities to, uh, to work in Houston, uh, which you don't find, um, everywhere in the United States where an, an urban campus. Um, we, uh, as Houston have more seats per capita for performing arts than New York City, Chicago, or Los Angeles, so this is a great place to be involved in the arts. And those experience will bridge into the, um, the transfer of the four-year programs. In terms of audio recording technology, you know, one, one of the things we really encourage students to do is, um, get involved with our, uh, student music showcase, MISA. Um, and so as a student organization, there are opportunities to perform. Uh, we have competitions. Um, we put our students out, um, in the music industry, uh, to make good connections and to, uh, work on different projects. Um, so we're, we're active as faculty in connecting our students to the kinds of, uh, art projects, um, that, uh, meet their goals. Um, and it's, you know, it's really a, a one-on-one process of connecting students with opportunities. So please, please, please get involved with career services while you're here and stay in contact with us as alumni, because we always wanna know what you're doing and how we can help.
Our next question, thank you, Dr. Riley. I apologize. Our next question is for Dean Viselli. It's, uh, talking about opportunities. Is there anybody on the panel that can ask that, answer this question for Dr. Viselli, or do we wanna come back to it? Okay, I.
I can, I can take that question. So the transfer opportunities, we do have articulation with all major university partners in the state of Texas. Are obviously are, you know, natural funnels that we have and the academy models that we have created here, um, which is, uh, one with the, uh, Texas A&amp;M, that is an academy. And you know that if we, um, directly apply for Texas A&amp;M Engineering Program, it's highly competitive. So if they go through Houston Community College after the first semester, they are co-enrolled, by the way. And then after the first or second semester, whenever they are ready, they can transfer to Texas A&amp;M. Um, so that's a very easy transfer, easy transition. Um, and we do have articulation for full, uh, transferable degree. Same thing with University of Houston. We have articulation with University of Houston. That is our, um, your, the academy program. If you want to go through Houston Community College, you will be a student both at University of Houston, at, also at Houston Community College. So as long as in both of these cases, um, uh, if you are maintaining your GPA and you are taking the necessary courses, it's a cohort-based program, then you can transfer. Uh, with the University of Houston, you do, the students do complete, I believe, the first two years with us. Um, and they are also co-enrolled with, um, with the University of Houston. The other big transfer program that we have is UT Tyler program at the Alee Phase Campus. And, um, with that, basically, we come, the students complete our ASES degree, Associate of Science Engineering Science, and then, um, they can transition to UT Tyler. Uh, and that articulation, too, it's fully transferable. If the students are going and, and enrolling in other schools, it could be Texas Southern, it could be any other school of choice. Um, we, we have articulations with the universities, and we try to make sure that, uh, most of your credits are transferred or, or almost all your credits are transferred. So I just recommend if the students, um, are in one of those transferred engineering programs, do work closely with your academic advisors so they can see which university you will be transferring to, and you do not lose any credits, and it's an easy transition for you. I hope I answered this question.
Thank you so much, Dean Adiel. Um, our next question is actually for Dr. Hodges, but we're gonna skip that for just a second, and hopefully he'll be able to join us, and we'll come back to him. I'll turn the floor over to Eugenia.
Yes, thank you. Um, for Dr. Anne Zavino or Mr. Dunbar, we had a question, um, about the operations and online instruction. What are some measures that Northwest College is putting forward to support instructors with the technical and logistical equipment they need to sustain in-person hybrid or online classes?
That's an interesting question, and I'm not sure I'm gonna be able to provide it with a whole lot of support on that. Uh, I will tell you that our campus managers at each of the campuses are committed to working with the IT and networking individuals to make sure that, uh, all of our faculty are, um, able to use the technology and logistical equipment that, that are, uh, in the classrooms. I do know that some of our, um, faculty have been using the actual classroom to do their instruction when it's online. So we're, we're excited about that opportunity, because that gives them, uh, good access to, you know, quality equipment and, uh, a high level of wifi. Mark, would you be able to add anything specific to that one? Mark Lambert is the Campus Operations Manager for the Bissonnet Campus, and, uh, I already told him that, that he might be, uh, helping me pick up the ball here a little bit.
I don't know if you guys can see me. I got three screens, but, um, I'm Mark Lambert. I'm the Campus Manager over at the Alee Bissonnet Campus. But we work hand-in-hand with IT, uh, at, at the start of every semester to make sure all of our classes are in perfect operating condition, so that the, the teacher station could work, the connections to the projectors. All of those things work if, if they are choosing to come to the campus. We also make ourselves available if there's an online faculty member who's having problems at home to where their technology is not, or their bandwidth is not strong enough, that we provide them a classroom to facilitate that learning to the students who are at home. So we work diligently with both IT and any other partner at the college to make sure that we facilitate learning. That's our core responsibility, and we make sure it happens.
Yep, that's, that's, that's a really good response to that, too. You know, we work also closely, and, and when we consider projects, so we're working on a couple of projects where we're moving some departments around, and, and we, uh, are thinking about the technology components, even down to what software is loaded on, on computers in the, in the testing center, so that we make sure that as we move departments around related to the Katie move, that, uh, we have the appropriate software as well, uh, to help students make sure that they, um, are successful in their, in their classroom, uh, experience.
Thank you.
So our next question is for Dr. Riley. I'll turn the floor over to Kiosa.
Hello, Dr. Riley. This question is for you. Um, given a technical and logistical support for all types of class, when can we expect visual and performing arts course to transition back to face and, uh, face-to-face? Is there any news of bringing back creative arts, dance, or theater in person? What precautions are the college taking to ensure safety is upheld?
Did we lose Dr. Riley?
You, you did momentarily, but I'm back.
Okay, wonderful.
I apologize. I, uh.
Oh, no. Technical issues happen, you know, in this virtual world.
So I, I'm, I'm just reading and can jump into the question unless, uh, some, someone needs to ask it. I, I missed that part.
That's okay. Go ahead and ask, um, at your will.
Yeah. Sorry. It's okay. I, I'm super excited. Um, we are bringing things back in person, uh, this semester. Um, we had our first music recital, student recital in person, um, in December. Uh, and, um, it was just really wonderful for everyone to be back performing together. And we ended it with like a little Christmas carol sing-along, and I'm not gonna lie, I got a little choked up. Uh, it was just pretty sweet for all of us to be, um, singing together in a room safely. Uh, so we're gonna continue more of that. We, um, had our faculty music recital last night. That is virtual. Um, it's available on Edgitude, and I'll put the link in the chat. And we have a Black History Celebration later this week that is also virtual. Um, those decisions were made, you know, along with the college's sort of cautionary approach to our current COVID situation. Uh, and we're gonna continue that. So, you know, we're making choices about when we have students on stage, making sure that there's some social distancing in place for the performers. Um, when we're in rehearsal, we have special singing masks and also, um, masks for our. When we're in rehearsal, we have special singing masks and also masks for our musical instruments. So there's some additional filtration, we're just being very thoughtful about how faculty and students are interacting across all of our seven disciplines. We will continue our Instagram virtual exhibition, but we will also have student exhibitions in the galleries at the end of this semester. And for the galleries and for other live performances, we will be limiting our audiences, so we ask that people register through IDloom so that we can get a head count and make some plans accordingly just to make sure that we're not over accommodating, that we are, you know, being cautious about the number of people coming together. And we're just, I can't tell you how good it feels to be back in person in our, in our disciplines especially, but we're being very careful about it and we're making choices really on a case-by-case basis.
Thank you, Dr. Riley, we do have a quick follow-up from one of our board members on that, this subject. Kiyosha, you wanted to ask a quick question?
Yes, so I thank you so much for your explanation, it was very informative, Dr. Riley. I do actually want to ask another question as far as dance is concerned. What are you guys' precautions for dance? And the only reason why I'm asking is because I did sign up for World Dance last semester and ended up dropping the course because it wasn't in person.
Yeah, dance is, dance has really taken, it has been really challenging because we want to create a safe environment, but we have people moving around. So what we've done in the dance studios for our applied dance classes, we are running those as hybrid lab classes, so there is some flexibility between online and in-person instruction, which gives us just, you know, just a little, just a little space to be creative. And then in the studios, you know, we are taping out social distance boxes for dancers so that they are, you know, conscious of how they're moving in the space. And we're trying to, to keep some social distancing in place even while the students and faculty are dancing. And when the weather was better, we were able to take World Dance especially outside. We were able to do that, our Central Campus, we weren't able to do that at Northwest because the, we have grass at Central and did not have grass available at Spring Branch. But, uh, you know, it's getting more and more, faculty are becoming more and more accustomed to teaching under these circumstances. I think everyone's just becoming more aware. So I encourage anyone who wants to take a dance class to, to come and join us. And if you have concerns, you know, talk to the faculty because, you know, we're there to make you feel comfortable and to address your concern. So it's, please sign back up for World Dance, it's such a gem of a class. And it, it hurts my heart when we, when we aren't able to run those courses due to low enrollment. It's something very special that, that we have here at HCC where World Dance, Music Fundamentals, our Foundations of Art classes, those are core classes and most community colleges would present those to students as lectures. But these are courses that we've worked really hard to build the actual discipline into. So you make art, you make music, you, you physically dance in those classes. So, so please come on back.
I do plan on coming back, I just want to let you know, it's part of my creative arts, I need it, so I do plan on coming back.
Okay, all right, perfect.
Thank you. Um, the next question was for Dean Vaselli. Or no, it's Dean, Dr. Adeel Emerson, sorry.
So yeah, we all know that, you know, keeping, you know, students enrolled and keeping them and HCC is very important, so that's why I had a question for you, Dr. Adeel. So one crucial metric for success in higher education is student retention. So what are the resources that students can access to ensure student retention is maintained? And how could we help as students and SGAs as well make that easier process for you?
Yeah, Eugenia, excellent question. We, you know, every student that come to HCC comes with the unique needs. If you wanna overgeneralize it, we do understand as an institution that students have academic challenges, personal life challenges, financial challenges. It, it could be anywhere on the very broadest spectrum. So no two students are same and they're, obviously their needs are different. So when we look at the students, there, there are adults, learners among us. We have single parents, we have the students who are working full-time jobs or part-time jobs. We have students who are veterans or who are currently in military servicing. So we have a students who may have some background or we have students with this special accommodation, special needs. So there are all kind of different needs. Where I'm gonna tell you the resources that exist at Houston Community College and how we have everything available and, and you brought up an excellent point. The more we know, the more we will be able to notify students or, or let them know. Oftentimes when we do surveys, it, and there are some state-level surveys where students were asked, especially at community colleges, if they value the service. So when, when we ask the question if they value the service, they say they highly value the service, but when we ask if they utilized it, a lot of the students end up saying that they didn't know about it. So anyways, some of the support services that we have, obviously when it comes to careers, as Dean Riley previously mentioned, we have a career services office. It is not, you know, you can go there, they have job banks, they have internships. They do your resume critique, they help give you advice how to dress for resume. They help you with interviewing your skills. So it's a whole holistic experience, anything about job placement, internship, and getting, leading up to that experience or leading up to that final job placement. We, our career services assist with that. Same thing with our counseling services. So a lot of the time counseling is just one of those services where people are like, oh, I don't need counseling. We do not realize what the services that they provide. So the mental health counseling is just one of the things. But they, with our counselor, counseling office, the students, if they have a special accommodation needs, they, you can go and get accommodation, it could be temporary, it could be long-term. If you fall, you know, life happens. If you fall below 2.0 or, you know, that is the GPA, that is a critical GPA, you need 2.0 to graduate, at least 2.0 to graduate, at least 2.0 to transfer and, and to maintain your financial aid and your good academic standing. So that's where our counseling department helps. They help with the academic GPA recovery. So they will work with the students and, and provide them tips and, and, you know, just help them with the techniques, how to rebound back. Another service that is also, and currently, and this is fairly new service, I wouldn't say brand-new. We have been doing, offering basic need services at least last three, four years. And counseling services have also taken ownership of that basic need. So it could be anything, it could be, you know, whatever you are struggling with, it could be supplies, it could be the assistance with shelter, home. Whatever it is the need, we have some resources that are internal. There are some resources that we partner with our community partners. So they are very well positioned to guide the students where to receive that help. The, we have our Food Care and Freeze, our food scholarship program. We also have, what do you call the, our advising? So advisors are very important, they keep you on track, they help you graduate, they help you get where you need to go. So either you are graduating with a workforce program or if you are going to transfer, that's where the help is critical. So do, you know, reach out to them and get those services. Student engagement goes hand-in-hand. And I don't think I need to say more. We, we have our student government, our leaders here. And today, the job that you all are doing, I would say, in some of our meetings, our professional meeting, we want to adopt some of what you are doing. You do carry yourself in such a professional manner and these softer schools go a long way. And my dissertation was in a student engagement and first-year retention programs for community college students. The biggest thing, the, the indicator that I found in my research was that one relationship that you can make on campus, someone, a go-to person. That is the biggest indicator of the student retention and success, the student completion. So, you know, if those students who are involved in leadership activities in any student life or connected with the personnel, either to the faculty member or an advisor or anyone else, that is a good retention tool. Obviously, we have other support services that includes free tutoring center. You can go receive in-person tutoring, you can receive on virtual tutoring. We have our department or faculty, most of our faculty is very, very passionate. So if you are looking for that mentorship or that advice or career advice, they're more than open and they provide that, you know, advice to students. So there, there's a lot more, the, it is very personal what a student needs are. But some students, you know, they do not avail the opportunities or services that are there. Some are just not aware. So if we can all do our part and make sure that we can inform and educate the students, I think it will go a long way. I, you know, and this is a question that other people can also comment. Dr. Riley, did I cover everything or did I miss something?
Oh, I think you, you covered, covered everything. I, but I, I would just add that I think, and one thing I've been experiencing recently is students just not knowing who to ask or how to reach faculty or instructional leaders or people on campus and, or not feeling like they should reach out. So I, I just want to really underline that we are all here to support you. And even though I am the, the dean of the Center of Excellence for Media, Visual and Performing Arts, if you have an engineering question, you can come to me, I won't know the answer, but I will be happy to connect you to whoever, you know, you need to speak to. So I, you know, we fielded a lot of questions from the HCC Eagle to Eagle webpage on Facebook where, where it's all hands on deck, faculty, staff, deans, instructional leaders. You know, if we know an answer to a question, we will, we will post it. If we need to find out the answer, we'll, we'll do that, you know, we reach out to students directly. So I, it always hurts my heart a little bit when I hear from students that they didn't feel like they could come and see me or they didn't know that they could, you know, talk to a chair or they, they didn't, they didn't feel comfortable asking a faculty member a question. And that could, that can all feel scary. But I really encourage you, you know, to come forward if you have questions or concerns and ask for help. If anything that the past two years have taught many of us, it's that asking for help is a great place to start. And we're all here to support you.
Yeah, and I'd like to actually chip in. I'd like to chip in on that, too, in terms of the campus operations staff. You know, our front desk staff are always fielding questions and answering phone calls. And same thing where their campus managers, they're available to help. I know that if students come up to the front desk, we try to get them to the right location to get their answer, our questions answered. I've seen them reach out to campus managers to say, I have a question, I don't, I don't know the answer. And they, they reach out as well to two different deans to help answer any kind of concerns that the students may have when approached at those areas. So, and we're more than happy to help out as well. We don't have all the answers for sure, but we certainly know how to, how to get students to the right location. At least we try to get students to the right location to get the right answer.
Thank you, I appreciate your answers from all three of you, Dr. Adeel, Dr. Riley, and Mr. Dunbar. You know, we are here as a holistic approach, we really want to, you know, support the students and support the staff. So our next question is actually for Dr. Vaselli and we have about 10 minutes before the meeting ends. Julie, do you want to go ahead, is there anybody that Julie can ask this question to?
I, I can't speak specifically to engineering, but I, I will share that there are some really big conversations happening across instruction around marketable skills and employability skills. And I, I think that that's exactly what you're describing here is applied learning, project-based learning, practicum-based learning. You know, those things are very important to all of instruction at, at HCC. Last fall, we were able to pilot a really fun, exciting work-based experience for filmmaking, fashion, cosmetology, and commercial photography students, where we staged a fashion show at the Heinen Theater using all students. We filmed it, we photographed it. You know, it was faculty, staff, and students all hands on deck. So I, I think that we're really being intentional about more of that kind of applied, active, project-based learning being used in the curriculum, across the curriculum for academic and for workforce programs. On an instructional level, that's a big conversation we're having right now. And, and you may not see these kinds of conversations, but we also have a rigor summit that all faculty are attending on Friday where we're talking about how to make sure that we're communicating excellent standards, we're supporting students to reach their instructional goals. So sometimes I, I don't know that, how visible it is to students that we talk about teaching and learning and making it better all of the time at HCC, which is one of the exciting things about being here with you.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
I'd kind of like to add on to that, too. Tomorrow, I actually have a conversation, beginning conversation about doing, whether it's the possibility of internships or apprenticeships with hospitality administration program. We have event management that could kind of fall into that as well as front-of-the-house operations. And how can we, how can we take those experiences that we do every day and then allow this to, to allow some kind of program for students to gain hands-on experience with those kind of areas? And so actually, I'm kind of excited about where this conversation is gonna lead. It literally is just starting tomorrow, so I don't know where it's gonna go. But I'm crossing my fingers that we can come up with some operational internships through the hospitality program.
Thank you so much for all of your answers. I'd like to take a moment to welcome Dr. Hodges to the meeting. He just had the opportunity to log in. And I would like to take a minute to let him introduce himself.
Yeah, I'm so sorry I'm late, my goodness. It, I love this opportunity to interact with students and maybe a little noisy here. I was at the World Affairs Council and we were hosting, I'm on the board. We were hosting the ambassadors from Hungary, Czech Republic, Slovakia, and Poland. So, and I was right up front and so I couldn't get up and leave. But this is an important activity and I know it's been a good hour and I'm at the tail end, so tell me what you want me to do.
Absolutely, Dr. Hodges, we're gonna go up to the first question we had for you. Give us just a second that we kind of skipped. And Emerson, if you want to take the floor and ask Dr. Hodges?
Yeah, of course, of course. So we have, now that there are a great deal. we have now that there are a great deal of students back on campus. I mean, what are some of the projects and initiatives that students can expect for the upcoming school year? So what are just new things that maybe the students here are, can look forward to and any projects or whatnot? See, that's our question.
Well, to quote Laura Williamson, who was the head of our collaboratorium. I, I would love to make our campuses as sticky as possible. And what that means is that students have a, have a reason to stay on our campus, to engage with our faculty and staff. And create all kinds of learning opportunities for themselves through our various project-based activities, our student activities, all of those kinds of things, supplemental learning programs in the library. You know, I want students to be engaged. I want them to come to campus because they want to. Virtual learning is great and I know some of you do both or maybe do one or the other, but I, I think the college experience, the student experience really still is around the campus. So you're shortchanging yourself by just being virtual. If you have to be, you have to be, but there's so many opportunities to interact with other students and faculty and staff and engage in various programming. So that's what I want to create. I want to create as many options for students on campus as we can. I was at the New Katie Campus this morning and I think that's going to be a prime example of what I'm talking about. Open environment, lots of activities going on. Engaging with faculty and staff in a new way. Real excited about that. We want the same thing to happen at Spring Branch, at Aleaf Hayes, West Houston and at Bissonette. So every campus ought to be sticky. And that's, that's a term I really like because we're going to keep you there as long as we can.
Thank you, Dr. Hodges. Because of our short time and we got some really amazing questions from the panel. I would like to take this opportunity to thank you all. I know that you know, some of our students have to go back to class and things and, and, but I wanted to thank you all for joining us today and answering our questions and, and communicating those, the answers to this, our fellow students. So, thank you, Dr. Adiel. Thank you, Mr. Dunbar. Thank you, Dr. Riley. And thank you, Dr. Hodges, for joining us and answering that last question. It kind of actually brought back a lot of retention where we talked to Dr. Adiel and Mr. Dunbar and Dr. Riley about earlier in the program. So I, I love that idea of stick. So thank you all.
Thank you, everyone. Yeah, that was a new, uh, new way of saying it as well. Sticky. I never heard of that. Yeah, it was awesome how you presented that and you, you pretty much explained it really thoroughly and I really loved the way you just, oh, I love all the, the whole panel, how you answered all the questions. It was amazing. Thank you all so much. I'm so glad we had you.
We enjoyed it thoroughly. Thank you so much for inviting us.
Thank you again.
Appreciate it. Let's do it again.
Absolutely. Thank you, fellow students for joining us and have a great afternoon. Don't forget, we have, you know, lots of stuff coming up in March. Check out the presence page and see what we've got coming up for everybody. Again, thank you, Dr. Hodges, Dr. Adiel, Dr. Riley, Mr. Dunbar. And we very much appreciate your time.
Thank you. And students, if we missed any questions that you didn't get to ask, just type it down in the chat and we will get to it. We'll email you. We'll get you those answers.
Kyosha.
I, I just wanted to say I did type in the chat, but I do know, I did work in hospitality and I was a, a front office manager. Hilton definitely works with hospitality degrees for sure. Like they offer that. So that is something that the students can look forward to because me, I hired two college students that was doing hospitality. So they work with the schedules and everything. So this FYI, Hilton does work with the college with hospitality.
Yeah, I'm, I'm excited about this opportunity. I've, I've worked at four-year degree and a lot of my staff in the past have been college students working through the program and boy, they're fantastic and they're great. And I'm hoping to start recreating some of that experiences for, for students in that particular area. We'll see where that, that road goes.
Hey, hey Jeff, let me know if you need any help. That's my background.
Awesome. That'd be great.
Long time into hospitality business.
That'd be great. I will.
All right.
Thank you all again so much. And we're going to say goodbye, you know, and don't hesitate to ask us questions on, you know, through our email, eight at SGA Northwest. We would love to forward your questions to the different deans and, and staff members. Thank you. Have a wonderful.
Bye guys. Have a wonderful.
Hey guys, we're going to have to end because Dominique needs a Zoom. So, um, call me personally. Okay?
Okay. Bye guys. Bye guys.
Bye.